Len's counting down ten.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
We have no requests under Roll Call A, so I'll do the roll call now. Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Lenz.
All right, here. All righty, I'll take a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Oral Communications, number one. This is an opportunity, if someone from the public would like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity. Helga, would you like to speak before the council? Or do you have something else on the agenda that you'd like to talk about?
You know, I think I will wait until you sing. So my concern is...
Oh, if you can come to the podium, please.
The podium?
Yeah, 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 come on up here. Yeah, yeah, no, no, we won't fight. We're friendly.
Anyway, I'm Helga Gudis, and I live on Avrata Street, on the left side of the proposed alleyway. And everything is fine, the alleyway, you know, seems to be a nice project. We have two very mature redwood trees that have been there since we bought the house, close to fifty, five, zero years ago. And they're very beautiful. And then Friday, I think just a week ago, Friday, I was a little under shock when somebody came to our door unexpectedly. And it was Karen Kinser, but I didn't know her, and she didn't introduce herself, and tree person there. Tree person unexpectedly, and like I said, it was an inconvenient time and all this for us too in the morning. My husband is sick, and I take care of him in the morning. But anyway, we came to the door because urgent doorbell ringing. And she said, oh, we're here to take a look at your property. And I said, well, that's fine, but why would you want to do it? I mean, I didn't know who it was even. And then the tree guy said, he said, oh, we're going to take down your trees. So it sounded, I mean, it sounds almost like unreal, but they must have said the wrong thing, or maybe they thought they can get in there without opening a little gate that we have. Not locked, but maybe they hoped they could just go in there. And that was it. And then I was, you know, under shock. I said, well, I said, I don't know anything about this, and apparently the roots are under the new proposed alleyway. And I mean, whatever it takes, I'm, you know, not going to go against anything. But I was under shock, because since we lived in the house for about forty-five years, we enjoyed the trees, of course, you know, from our deck upstairs, look at the trees. So I was a little under shock, but everything went fine. She left a, Karen left a business card in my mailbox, and she wanted to know my name. I don't know her name, and they actually took off. And so that's when I called Cliff, and I called the city manager. And Karen back too. I said, I'm glad I know who you were now that you left, and thanks for coming by, but we will have to clarify it, you know? And that's basically all. And I'm here to see what can be done or not be done in order to go on with your project and still have, whatever can be done. And that's why I'm here. I just want to see if there is an idea about it, so I don't have to give you the whole rundown, why we have trees and heritage trees, and what could they do, and all of that, you know, all of that. So I'm not asking to keep them, I'm just asking for clarification and what can be done.
Thank you so much, Helga, for coming tonight.
Because we were, family was under shock, having somebody come to the, we take down your tree.
Yes.
Was the wrong wording, but for me, I was not aware that that would have been a possibility, but I understand woods go far, so.
All right, thank you, Helga.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely. You know, I know this is an item that is on our agenda, but it's in the consent calendar. And many times, we make a motion to disapprove the consent calendar and not talk about those items. So that's why I felt it was important to let Helga speak at this time. You know, if a council member, okay, well.
It's not really.
So Ingrid, is anyone online who wants to speak in oral communications?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, so then moving on to the consent calendar. We have items B through I. So we could pull that item.
I don't really feel like that's about that item, because this item is about art. It's on the stairway, but it's just about the art, so I don't think it would be appropriate.
I'm just asking if anyone wants to do it, don't have to, and we could move forward with approving the consent calendar as it is.
I'd make a motion to approve items B through I.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just full transparency, I've been in communication with the city manager to try and have a meeting with the homeowner, just to look at her trees and hear more about what she has to say.
That's good.
So moving on to new business. Item J, adoption of Public Art Master Plan. Maureen, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. It is my pleasure to bring before you tonight the Public Art Master Plan. This plan was created to provide long-term direction to the Public Art Advisory Committee and the City Council on the planning and processes necessary to further develop, administer, and maintain a dynamic public art program for the city of Brisbane. Over the past year, the consultant team from Nine Dot Arts has worked alongside staff in the Public Art Committee to ensure a community-informed approach to the curation of this vision. Public art was collected, public input was collected through a variety of methods, which led to the development of mission and vision statements, art criteria, and key priorities. The plan also outlines procedures and best practices and offers templates to support the various processes. The Public Art Advisory Committee unanimously recommends this plan for your consideration and adoption, and they are collectively very proud of the end product. At this time, I would like to introduce the consultant team from Nine Dot Arts, Molly and Olivia, who will provide a high-level overview of the plan itself, and we are happy to respond to any questions you may have. With that, I will turn it over to Molly and Olivia.
Thank you so much, Maureen. Hi, great to be here tonight, thank you. I'm Molly Casey, co-founder and chief curator over at Nine Dot Arts. We were the group selected to help pull this plan together for the city of Brisbane. I'll go ahead, Olivia, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, everyone, I'm Olivia Dahlquist, Marketing Manager at Nine Dot Arts, and it's been a joy to work with everyone at the city to push this along.
Yeah, so we're excited to be here tonight. We'll give you a brief overview and then happy to answer any sort of questions you guys may have. Olivia, I'll go ahead and kick it over to you.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. And I'm not sure how the room is set up, but I believe you can see this. Oh, yes, knife and big behind you, okay, great. So here you have the cover of our Brisbane Public Art Master Plan, and let me know if at any point I need to do any zooming. We've got some quick acknowledgements to thank all those who were involved in the creation of the plan. And then here, I'll just pause on our table of contents, because as you can see, there's quite a bit in this plan. And, you know, with only fifteen minutes or so tonight, we obviously can't go through all of it. So I just want to highlight some of the parts that Molly and I are going to focus on today, which is the overview, looking at the mission and vision, some of the key recommendations, processes and procedures for actually curating and installing art into the future, and some locations, and all of this really emerged through the community input. So with that, I'll just dive right in. Of course, we start with kind of an executive summary to let you all know how this plan came about. Obviously, there was a lot of desire from residents, and with many of the new developments going on in and around the city, it was really the perfect time to come up with a plan to help give some guidance as to how public art can be integrated with these developments. So what this plan accomplishes, it really outlines a mission, vision, and selection criteria for public art, so that you can vet any future projects against those criteria, educates the community on the social and economic benefits of art, pinpoint some strategic locations for thinking about placing art into the future, outlines some key recommendations and partnerships that might be useful as this public art program grows, and then also outlines some priorities, processes, and overall long-term guidance for helping the Public Art Advisory Committee to really implement this plan. As Maureen mentioned, this was a very much a community-informed approach. Molly and I were lucky to get to come out to Brisbane, as well as have several, you know, virtual meetings with the Public Art Advisory Committee, as well as another kind of group of some arts-oriented community members that the advisory committee helped to collect. We also administered a digital survey, and, you know, some paper versions were handed out. And Molly and I attended the citywide yard sale, the farmer's market, and the concert. We had such a great weekend, actually, in Brisbane, helping to solicit this community input and kind of let everyone know about the forthcoming public art plan. So all of this feedback was consolidated and translated into everything that you're going to see in this plan. One thing I wanted to point out here are these five categories. Something that emerged during community input was this idea of, you know, harnessing Brisbane's unique identity. But we wanted to tap into that and say, well, what does Brisbane's identity really look like? And that's where these five categories emerge. So a focus on the small-town atmosphere, you know, wanting to maintain that cozy vibe, community and connectedness, residents really appreciating the mutual support that you all give each other, nature and environment, obviously a deeper appreciation for the natural surroundings, artistic and unique, so this focus on individuality, and then civic engagement and inclusivity, the idea that people are really active in their community and care about what's going to be coming next. I will go through the looking forward, looking back. Essentially, we kind of looked at the history of Brisbane, so we could ground our recommendations in that history, thinking about, you know, City of Stars, the amazing Fire Hydrant program that you have, and of course, this butterfly mural and all of the history that's embedded in it. And so as we look to the future, we want public art in Brisbane to support the city's social and economic growth, serving as an essential tool for honoring history, celebrating evolution, and embracing a prosperous future. Here we get into a little bit of education, thinking about, you know, why should people care about public art? So we've addressed that on an individual, community, business, and citywide level, and really looked at how art can support Brisbane's goals as a city. We've got some social and economic benefits. And then we've got this caveat that we want everyone to remember, and we tell all the cities that we work with about this, which is, you're not going to like every piece of public art in a collection. We tell folks that maybe you should love about a third of the collection, not really like a third of the collection, and feel indifferent about a third, because, you know, something that you might not like could be someone else's favorite, and that actually makes a really diverse and well-rounded collection, because it's going to spark conversation and really get people talking. That brings us to the mission and vision for public art. Like I said, all of this was informed by the community input, and then we spent significant time with the Public Art Advisory Committee, kind of whittling this down and making sure it felt very reflective of what we heard. So the mission for public art in Brisbane is to support community identity, unity, and pride through diverse artwork that grabs attention and distinguishes a unique sense of place. If Brisbane achieves this mission, we envision a public art program that supports the local community, represents values and characteristics significant to Brisbane, so again, those sort of five categories we looked at, is unexpected and diverse, educates residents on the value of art and the city's process for implementing it, is integrated into community gathering spaces, mindful of the environment, and leverages opportunities from new development while maintaining the unique character of Brisbane. So I'll just pause there before we dive into some recommendations. Any initial thoughts, are we able to do that?
Anybody want to ask any questions from the first section? Or would you prefer to do the questions afterwards? Okay, looks like everyone would like to do the questions afterwards, Olivia, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's great so far, it's fantastic.
That's great. So here, we present some high-level recommendations. And, you know, in the fine print here, you'll see that none of these are, you know, quote-unquote "musts." These are just some things for the Public Art Advisory Committee and the city to really be thinking about as they go about expanding the public art program. So at the beginning of the year, if you're looking at funding, and you say, okay, what projects are we going to start with? These are just some strategic recommendations to help give guidance. So I'll go through these kind of at a high level. The first was expanding community engagement opportunities. Right now, the primary way for folks to contribute to public art is by attending the Public Art Advisory Committee meetings, virtually or in person. And so this recommendation is all about kind of, you know, deepening that engagement with residents through things like having them vote on public art proposals, getting involved in the actual art-making, and, you know, having more opportunities to celebrate unveilings or other kinds of educational art opportunities where people can come together. Again, we list some strategies within one to three years, four to six years, and seven to ten years, really help paint a picture of what community engagement could look like over the next ten years as it relates to public art. Here, this recommendation is all about kind of increasing and formalizing temporary and educational public art projects. What we learned from the committee, and what Molly and I certainly saw when we were there, is that Brisbane has this really great culture of kind of like pop-up art. We've seen the graffiti tunnel, we saw the dragon that was on the skate park. And so this recommendation thinks about, how can we kind of put a little bit more structure around that while still encouraging that kind of creativity within the community? Again, we've got recommendations, including things like a rotating mural program at the skate park, to kind of expand on most of the done. Here we go into increasing public art in Brisbane's parks and trail systems. Molly and I had the opportunity to really walk the whole city and enjoy your trail systems, and there were so many places where we thought, oh, this could be a great opportunity for art. So we get into that a little bit with our location plans. Installing public art at scale, we know that there are some larger developments coming along, and we want to think about how to integrate with those developments while, again, keeping Brisbane's unique identity. And a way to do that is through some of these iconic art pieces that are a little bit larger in scale. And that brings us to the last one about strengthening relationships with private developers. Of course, the Baylands was quite a big, you know, conversation topic every time we visited and engaged with the community. And while I think there's a lot of excitement, of course, there's also some maybe hesitation about, again, wanting to kind of keep Brisbane that cozy vibe that it is. And so this recommendation really has some strategies for engaging with developers of the Baylands early, giving them this public art plan, letting them know what the Brisbane community has identified as priorities for public art, so that you can kind of start to build that goodwill and rapport with them, and make sure that it feels integrated as that site is being developed. So that hasn't passed to Molly.
Processes and procedures, everyone's favorite. You have to have a great process to be able to make this a great program. So really, this is an overview here about where art funding comes from and how the selection process should take place. So Olivia, we can actually just jump forward. We put together the selection criteria. So this was really, really critical, and this came out of, again, our community engagement. And these six bullet points that you see here are the things that resonated most with the community to say, this is what we want our artwork to be about. And the nice thing about this is this really gives some framework for how artwork is selected. So we're going to balance these proposals that come in for different artwork opportunities against this and say, is it checking all these boxes that we really want in our space? So that we're not going to have artwork there that just doesn't feel like it's authentic to Brisbane. In the selection criteria, we've put together not only a scorecard for RFQs, thank you, but also for RFPs, so that can be used throughout all meetings for selection processes. And what you'll see here is a flowchart for everybody to follow. So it's very clear what the process is, so that there's no questions. This is available to everyone who's involved. And then it really just goes through step by step how things are finally selected and when contracting begins with an artist. Now, this is for the public art selection via the city. We've also put together a public art selection process for private developers, because we know that that needs to come via the city as well for approval. And so this is, again, to Olivia's earlier point, something very important for us to, for you guys to share early on with the new developers as they come in, so that they're not asking too many questions, but also they get a good sense of what they're getting into upfront and feel like they can help to provide artwork in the right way for Brisbane. Again, we've got a timeline here, this is for temporary art and for permanent art. This just helps to sort of outline expectations around how long these processes should take. And then we can jump right into our next section, which is about our art typologies and also location planning. So we put together different art typologies, because you don't want to have just a random mishmash of what we like to refer to as plop sculptures in your community, where you buy a really cool sculpture and you just plop it somewhere. This art typology and location planning really helps to make sure that the artwork is actually very well thought out before it gets selected, so that we know where we're wanting to focus artwork and also what types of artwork would be appropriate for certain sites. So you see here, we've got four different types of artwork, temporary, iconic, discovery moments, and then functional. So you'll see these outlined in a little more detail in the images below that Olivia's flipping by there. So we have some precedent imagery, not only from the existing collection in the city, but also some inspirational and aspirational images as well. But again, we're also selected via the community. When it comes to art location planning, these are recommendations, again, solicited from the community. But in terms of areas that we would recommend focusing on first, now, these are not hard and fast rules, these are definitely recommendations where we think you would get the most bang for your buck. But we know that other locations are going to come up over time, especially as things start to change and develop. The stairwell right now that's being developed is a great example. You know, that is part of our parks and trails area, number two. And you'll see that throughout the plan. But location planning is really critical to making sure that we know where we want art to go, so that, again, we don't end up in a plop art situation. So these are just more details exactly by those locations and diving deeper into which types of art would be appropriate. And this will help guide to, then, those RFP and RFQ calls that'll go out to artists so that they know, hey, we're looking for an iconic piece here, so we're going to need a large-scale piece of sculpture. Please don't propose a mural here. So it just helps to provide framework and guidance as each art location is being addressed. So these are our different location areas, you'll see, these are all quite familiar. And then, of course, the Baylands, which I think this deserves its own deep dive once that gets a little bit more solidified with the developers. But definitely want to integrate all of these different art typologies throughout there as well. So this will be great guidance, again, this plan to be in the hands of those developers, so they really understand, you know, the purpose of putting that public art and how it should integrate with the entirety of the city. Next, we've got guidelines and best practices. These are pretty critical things, we always want to make sure that this is outlined really well for folks to understand. So this first area here, you'll see guidelines for inclusion of public art, right? So how should you include it? What are important things to think about where you're selecting a location? Or what it is that is in the surrounding area for that particular piece? So just some general guidelines to keep in mind as artwork is being selected. Excuse me. We've also just got general guidelines here for everybody to follow on managing the art inventory, especially as it continues to grow. You guys have a very nice inventory system right now that just outlines everything, and it's important to make sure that as things grow, they continue to get documented very well. So as the time passes, there's no questions about what happened. We've also got some policies for maintenance. Obviously, public art maintenance is something that is thought about by some, but not always the most exciting part about public art. And it's critical to making sure that the public art really continues to shine and continues to do its service for the city. Without maintenance, you really lose your collection. We also wanted to make sure there was a policy for donated artwork, because a lot of times folks want to be able to give something to the city, especially with private developers working with the city. We want to make sure there's just some guidelines there for you all to be able to say yes or no, and how that can work. And of course, de-acceSSIONing artwork, some things that maybe don't work anymore, too expensive to maintain over time. There's a lot of reasons that pieces might be de-acceSSIONed over time. But again, making sure that there's a nice policy in place for you all, so you're not having to invent that when the time comes.
And then we get to the other ones. The last four resources here. I will say we have like all of the community engagement results here, if anyone cares to take a look. And then something else that we wanted to point out was just this educational content. As I mentioned earlier, I think education really came through in the public engagement, not as like a key category, but really across all categories. Folks wanting to understand, like, where does the money come from? How does it get used? How can I be involved in public art? And so that's exactly what these pages do. And so that's exactly what these pages do. So this is even information that could be leveraged on other platforms such as the city's website, you know, via the Public Art Advisory Committee. And anytime that folks are asking about how public art works in Brisbane. So again, where does the funding come from? What's the value of having a present for art program? What even is a present for art program? And then how can the community participate?
I think that wraps us up and I just wanted to say real quickly, just what a complete joy and honor it has been to be a part of this process. And major kudos to Noreen and Angel for all of their shepherding of the community and us being introduced to the community. And the art committee has just been incredible as well to work with. So we just are so happy to have been a part of it. So thank you so much for allowing us to be there.
All right. Well, thank you Molly and Olivia. That was a fantastic presentation and an amazing document. I'm going to turn it over to our public art committee members if they have anything else that they would like to add.
Yes, I would love to add that it's been a pleasure to work with Nine Dot Arts. We just really connected right off the bat and I feel like they spent so much time getting to know Brisbane and coming up with a public art master plan that really fits us and our identity. So this is many, many hours of work from so many different people. I'd like to note that the art typologies that were listed, you saw four in there. There was more that like traditional, abstract, those other kinds of art that are contemporary, I guess. I don't know. Do you want to list the other ones that the community responded to? I think there was like three more. One was traditional.
We had traditional, we had, oh, we had edgy. That was one though. That one didn't do so well.
Yeah.
But yes, traditional was another one that didn't do so well and I'm trying to remember the third one.
I think it was contemporary was the third.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. And so I thought it was important for the council to know that that's how those four types of art suggestions were derived because the community was given all different pictures that represented different styles of art and then responded to what they liked. The public art committee did that amongst ourselves as well and we all gravitated toward those four. And then when it was taken out to the community, the community reflected that same thing. So that's how we're starting to figure out the brand and the character of art that feels like Brisbane. So I think that's a key element of this plan is really identifying what types of artwork here. So do you have anything you want to add?
I came into the program, you know, into the process very late. I had very little to add to the conversation because it was very well developed by the time I came in. And I do want to say that the, working with the Public Art Advisory Committee and the graphic artists here and the designers of this plan, I think they worked very cohesively well together and I was very impressed with the product that came out of it. So thank you.
Lastly, I'd love to acknowledge former council member Karen Cunningham, who spent a lot of time working on this document as well, as well as the rest of the Public Art Committee. And I feel that now with your blessing on this document, the Public Art Committee has the foundation that's needed to go out and start implementing art throughout Brisbane with a set of guidelines and a process that really makes sense.
All right, all right. Do we have some questions or comments from council members? Colin, you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, ladies. I read through the plan. Very comprehensive Public Art Committee. Thank you very much. Lots of work to get to this point. I know the Trail of Tears, you must have gone through multiple discussions.
Happy tears.
But I, yeah, I have a question. Nine Dots Art, you are located in Denver, Colorado, correct?
Correct.
So if I say Western art, you know what I'm talking about. And you may be cringing, but there's nothing to my madness here. I think we've all traveled to different communities. Oh, I shouldn't say that. Maybe we all haven't. But we've traveled to different communities where we go, oh, this is the revisit the Civil War community. Oh, this is the Western migration city. Oh, this is the city that really wants to be super, super modern. And I think Brisbane has had an identity as small and quirky and you've identified those traits. Our residents have certainly given you that feedback. If we went back to our history books, and I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at those, and we looked at years before the incorporation and you would see Western days. And so if we were looking at public art at that time, we might have seen reflections on the 23 Club with country western singers, maybe a large statue of a buffalo. Who knows? Because that was the tone of the time. And since the days of incorporation, Brisbane's had some changes, still retaining a core of reveling in the stars, our funkiness, our tight community. But like anthropologists studying both art and social changes, things change. My one concern here, and I'd like to hear your advice, is that in a dearth of public art, because we have some, you've identified it clearly. It's not as if we have nothing, but there's a great exuberance here. I'm sure you felt it for, oh my God, let's have public art. I'm worried about a saturation reflecting one era of time. And when I looked at your timelines of one to two years, and I'm sorry if I don't get them exactly right, one to two years, three to five, seven to 10, I'm very concerned that we have a proliferation reflecting our thoughts and our style of this time and not allowing for some of that to organically grow, reflecting the changes over other periods of time. Do you have any suggestions for how we can perhaps temper our exuberance and make sure that we're allowing other new residents that come into Brisbane or are born here and raised here to reflect their idea of Brisbane? And that we're not already saturated with all the public art you could ever fit into a tiny town. And I'm most concerned, I understand indoor art, you know, you can take it off the walls and go, you know, we need to retire this. But I'll give you another example. Our downtown, Visitation Street, many people will look at it and go, oh, Brisbane's art deco. I don't think people in Brisbane think Brisbane's all art deco. That's one person's opinion maybe, but there's a lot of art deco buildings. So the external art is what tends to stay longer. And have you dealt with cities or in the city of Denver where you live? Do you have advice for how we can carefully space this out so that we don't oversaturate all at once? Not leaving anything else for more art? Thank you.
Thank you. That is such a great question and I appreciate all the context you put into it as well. And yes, definitely have advice. And also I think just a little bit of maybe positioning of how public art gets selected over time as well. Because while the plan currently is for the one to 10-year mark, we know that just based on the amount of work that goes into all selections and all of the contracting and everything like that, there's no way that you would be able to get all of those locations completed in a 10-year span. So I think that the good news is that we've prioritized those, excuse me, and also said, this is something that, you know, the Public Art Advisory Committee needs to work on as well and decide cohesively with the community. Like, hey, which ones are the most important right now? What do we want to focus on? And then those other locations, after that 10-year mark, there will still be things happening there. So there's still going to be room to grow the collection always. I think another thing that's really important to consider too is that while there's the current state of what the community wants and likes, there's also the private developers who are coming in, right? And so they're going to bring different perspectives from outside of the community. And while it still needs to get approved by the Public Art Advisory Committee and the city itself, it doesn't have to fit in exactly the same way that the public art might for the community. So you're already going to be building in diversity from a different group of folks coming in from the outside, which I think we've already seen happen. I think your current collection is a great example of a lot of different perspectives. Some celebrating Brisbane hyper locally and others that have international artist fame. So it's a nice blend. I also think that one of the reasons we don't like to build art master plans longer than a 10, maybe 15-year span is because there needs to be room for those new voices to come in and say, hey, we're at this point now, let's change it. This master plan, we've done everything we can with it, we're going to now reinvent it. So there's always that option to go in as well and maybe the Public Art Advisory Committee decides too that that's something in five years they want to revisit because of something that's changed within the city dynamics themselves. So there's definitely opportunity for that reason of building those shorter timelines so that there is more flexibility. And then lastly, I think that the ability for you guys to also work within these more temporary pieces is very exciting and also allows pieces to come and go without having a major commitment to them forever. So that was one of the things that the community said they wanted. It's also something that we always encourage because there are a lot of easy wins because you can put on these great events, people can participate in these short-term art pieces and then they don't have to live on in perpetuity forever in your collection. So layering in those temporary works with some of these more iconic pieces and also these rotating works as well. So in the mural specifically that we had outlined for the skate park, our recommendation there is to actually have that be an ongoing piece that gets done every few years so that it's not a stagnant mural forever. It's something that the community gets to reinvent on a regular basis. It is such a high visibility place. We would hate for that to be something that just stays there forever and doesn't have the community saying, what do we want now? So I think, I hope I've answered your question. It's a big question and there's a lot in there. And I think there is also something fun and educational and historic to honor those sort of big iconic pieces or something that might be more profound for a long time for the then the future community to look back and say, why did we do that? What is the purpose of that piece? To continue to learn more about the public art community as a whole and like what's been done in the city over time. And I love your mention of buffalo. I immediately had this picture of a Native American with over a buffalo in bronze outside of our state capitol, which also is like right up the block from one of our most favorite pieces, which is an oversized giant red chair with a horse on top of it. It was just featured recently in an art competition, but those two being juxtaposed near each other is a great way to just see how the evolution of the community in the city has happened over time. So just like you're saying about anthropology, I think art can tell a story about a city and a community over time as well.
That's very helpful. Thank you much.
You're very welcome.
Great question, Councilperson Mack. And I just want to say thank you. I want to thank the community volunteers, the stakeholders, Nine Dot Art and the advisory committee. This has been a lot of work in the making for a very, very long time and the work product is amazing. So really happy. I was really excited to read through it today. Now, I did meet Molly and Olivia accidentally at the intersection of Mendocino and San Bruno during the garage sale. One of them said, have you taken the public art survey? And I responded and I said, I have. It's the best thought-provoking survey I've taken of my entire life. And they responded, we wrote it. So well done. I just want to comment again on that survey. It really slowed me down and really made me think and it was just fantastic. So in the appendix of the packet we got tonight with the results of that survey, I sat down with a cup of coffee this morning and I went through them and it was really quite eye-opening. So thank you for including that today. I also want to give you guys a nod for including a tieback to the city of Brisbane goals and putting the value to public art. So I thought that that was a nice slide and a nice inclusion there. And lastly, I just want to say, I saw in two places where you playfully said, but remember, you won't likely enjoy every piece of art in every public art collection. It was in there twice. I caught that. It wasn't wasted on me. So thank you very much.
The committee actually, when we were reviewing it, the public art committee was like, we would like that in there in a few places because it's a really important reminder. All of our tastes are different.
So if I may, I also had a question after reviewing it and sent this to a friend of mine who was colorblind and gave some feedback on the changes that would need to be made to be able to be readable by colorblind people. Did we initiate those changes? Yeah, I'm getting a nod from staff.
Yes, I'm nodding. So Molly and Olivia worked with their designer to provide an alt-color scheme version of the master plan. So they've kind of done some preliminary work on that and that is something that we could potentially have available on our website as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't see the changes in this. So and for me, it's hard to read, but I'm not quite colorblind.
You're looking at the not-alternative version. So yes.
So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, I'll just chime in a little bit here. Molly and Olivia, thank you for an amazing document. Of course, like they say, it takes a village and public art committee as well as the public and staff. You all worked amazingly together to create a document that is extremely thorough. It's expansive. It really sets out to capture as many things as possible that identifies who we are as Brisbane folk and the diverse locations of our town as well. You know, one of the things that I thought was really cool and supports the mission statement was the unexpected and diverse. And when I think of the recently installed art at Phase Three or the dragon at the skate park, you know, those things, we, you know, as Brisbane folks, we might not have said, yeah, you know, let's create something like that. But yet it feels right in our town. You know, many times it's something to do with the mountain or with the nature on the mountain, the stars. And the stairway is going to be an amazing piece. And that's, that's, yeah. Once it's built, it's going to be one of those places that people from outside of Brisbane are going to go to. Because there's folks that they want to walk every mosaic cool stairway in the Bay Area and it's going to get on that list and they're going to come to Brisbane. And Instagrammers. Yeah, well, exactly, right? And but that's one of those things that art does. It brings people in and it gives us an opportunity to show off who we are. Let's see. There's, you know, a couple of places that I think would be cool to have some art. Sometimes there are places that they're not typically sought out. Frank and I did another tour of industrial, industrial way is it? Yeah. And, you know, that's such a funky location in our town. But it'd be neat to have some art there just to bring people in. Or next month, I'm going to have an office hour meeting at the Mobile Home Park. And I think having a piece at the Mobile Home Park and just really thinking outside of kind of the typical spots that you identified here, you know, maybe having one or two pieces in different places too, just to kind of spread the wealth and the joy.
We did focus on city-owned property.
On city-owned property. Got it, got it. You know, okay, you know, and that's important, right? Okay, you know, and that's, that's important, right? But we do have spots on streets and things like that and maintenance things, you know. So there could be opportunities, but you're right about that. It needs to be public spaces. So, yeah, you know, again, excellent job, and this is going to be a wonderful game plan for creating incredible art. Just the one last thing, you know, and you emphasized this, Molly and Olivia, and that was building those relationships with the local developers, especially, of course, the Baylands developer, BDI. And that's such a massive project. You know, I mean, it dwarfs everything that will come before us, I mean, significantly. So I know that Madison, you've talked about, maybe we have, you know, a separate master plan for the Baylands. You know, I don't know how much money is expected to be generated, but it's got to be in the tens of millions of dollars of public art. And so not too many cities get that opportunity to put art into the public realm at that kind of level. And so, yeah, yeah, I know you're going to be thinking about it and I'm looking forward to what you guys, you know, how you start to tackle that.
Our initial conversation at the committee level was thinking ahead and saying, like, we should start thinking about a master plan for the Baylands and how art could be integrated thoughtfully into the design of the whole area and not, like Molly said, just plopped in places. And as we had more meetings, we realized first we need the foundation for the City of Brisbane and what, you know, what our identity as a town full of art looks like. And then from there, with that foundation, you can build separate master plans for, you know, Crocker Park Trail or the Marina or the Baylands. Baylands certainly will need its own public art master plan, in my opinion, so that, I imagine, will be forthcoming.
Yeah, you know, I bet. You guys are going to have a lot of fun work, you know, dealing with that. And, you know, I also really like how you guys emphasize the trails because, you know, you think of the Crocker Park Trail, that is really a connector with our two residential areas. And so having art be a part of that, I think, is just a really friendly and inviting way to strengthen connectivity. So, all right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, would you just check to see if there's public comments?
Public comments, yeah. So it looks like we have one member of the public who is, who would like to speak. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident, and I have been involved in the public art process since before there even was a committee. I gave input on the guidelines, I've read extensively on the topic, and one opportunity I think is being missed right now is to bring best practices to public art in Brisbane by removing elected officials from the art selection committee. So no other town in San Mateo County has elected officials on their art selection committee, and there's good precedent for why not. Back in the 1980s, the first culture wars happened when the NEA grants were taken away from several artists because lawmakers did not like their art. And we've had several examples in Brisbane where we have not followed the process, and I think it's because of elected officials want to redesign the process in order to have their say. And I think the best practice, and I think this is recognized nationally, is for arts professionals, arts practitioners, to serve on these art selection committees. And then you remove the political element from the selection process. We recently saw this in San Francisco when Supervisor Stefani stopped the Maya Angelou statue from our memorial or sculpture from, from being erected in front of the library because she wanted something more, I can't recall the word, she wanted something more representative of her body rather than just some, some monolith. And that was a political influence on the, on the arts process, and it delayed the production of public art by years. And she finally came to her senses and acknowledged that the committee had done the right thing and selected the right artist and the right piece of art. So I think that Brisbane should have learned from all this by now and just have art professionals or people who are really cognizant of the arts on the art committee. Lastly, the only other jurisdiction that I know of that does not practice that is our federal government, and it is Donald Trump, who is now on the, he's the Chair of the Board of the Kennedy Performing Arts Center, and we've already seen his impact on the arts, and it's not beneficial. He's also decreed that the NEA should have different criteria for their next round of grant giving, and it's really harmful to the arts. So I think the city council should take this opportunity to restaff or reallocate who is on the art selection committee. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I do have a question for the consultants. So Molly, Olivia, in the document, it talks about the temporary installations and encouraging that. Could a developer choose to install a temporary piece?
I don't think that would be allowed under the current documents, the current policy. They do have to invest in that. Now, could they, could they use above their art funds and do some temporary art as well in addition to their private art? Absolutely. I think I would encourage them to do that. But no, I don't think under the current policy, but that's not, it is either the, they either need to use the funds and pick out their own art and go through the process, or they need to give that money to the art committee to then choose where to spend it and how.
Okay, so a piece that they would do on their property to conform to the criteria of the public art ordinance, they, it would need to be a permanent structure piece as opposed to a temporary one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I, I would want to say that I believe that if the tenants of that building or whoever wanted to change the piece, they could probably go through the process and change that piece and remove a piece that they felt no longer met with their vision and put in some other kind of piece.
Yeah.
But it'd probably go through the same process as decommissioning art to a different degree of hours, but decommissioning art and, and replacing it.
Yep.
Yeah, no, that's great, yeah. I know that some of the examples were like these giant chalk pieces, and you don't want to do a giant chalk piece in the parking lot and that's it, right? So, but, okay, thank you for clarifying. Appreciate that. All right. Any other members of the public online? Ingrid? Okay, so it looks like we had our discussion. I think, it looks like we're all good. Tara, you're...
I'll make a motion to approve the public art master plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item K, Volunteer of the Year Selection Process. Staff report, please.
It's me again. As you all know, each year, the City of Brisbane recognizes a resident as its Volunteer of the Year. These awards are bestowed upon dedicated community members who have demonstrated ongoing commitment to the City of Brisbane. Typically, staff collects nominations for prospective recipients between April and August. Following the council's summer recess, a subcommittee comprised of the two city council liaisons to the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission Chair and Vice Chair would convene. The selection committee reviews the nominations received, including past non-awarded nominees from previous years, and votes on the award recipient. The individual selected is typically announced at the Day in the Park event and is honored at the Festival of Lights as they assist the mayor with lighting the festival tree. They are also recognized at a city council meeting with a formal proclamation. This serves as an opportunity for the city council to review the existing process and suggest improvements or modifications. If there are aspects of the process that require refinement or modifications for the 2025 process, they can be made at this time and direction to staff should be provided accordingly. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Noreen. Right, council member questions? Anyone on this side?
I don't know.
Frank?
No questions.
Pauline? No? Okay. All right, you know, I have a question, Noreen. So in the background, the second paragraph, this is typically staff collects nominations. So how, what's that process for collecting nominations?
Typically, they're received in writing, either via letter or email, and it comes through our office.
Who's it come from? Does the person nominate themselves?
No. Residents nominate fellow neighbors or friends within the community that they feel are worthy of the award.
So that's the only way that someone then gets to be considered? If there isn't a nominate, a letter of...
No.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the process.
Well, there are times when we review past nominations. So somebody, for example, Peter Grace, had been nominated several years in the past. Obviously, he wasn't nominated last year, but he had been nominated before. So the liaisons also consider past nominations, and sometimes there have been people who maybe haven't been nominated but were a very clear, clearly should have been, that as members of the council and, and, you know, representatives on Park and Rec say, this person definitely should be considered. So sometimes there's conversations of people that are outside of the official nominations.
Got it, got it, okay. All right. You got a, okay, yeah, thanks.
Noreen, in your opinion, is there any opportunity areas, any, do you have a problem statement with the current process? Anything along those lines? Any feedback you can give us there?
Not from my perspective.
Great, thank you.
If I could, through the Chair, this was an item that I had requested that be put on the agenda in part with, in consultation with council members in my time here. Various council members had shared their perspective on the process. I had a process in Portola Valley that was a little bit different, and I thought that there might be an opportunity for the council to discuss whether the current format as it's set up, it really doesn't include the entire council. So I thought that that would be something worth discussing.
So when we get to discussion, I don't know if you want to do a public hearing first?
So, yeah, let's do that. Obviously, there's no one in the room. So do we have anyone online that wants to ask a question regarding this matter? Doesn't look like it. Okay, so let's go to council discussion. So Tara, you want to...
So, over the years I've been on the city council, you know, a lot of years, the matter of public, of the Volunteer of the Year has never come before me. I actually made a nomination last year when I heard about it sort of secondhand, not through an announcement that this was happening, but just that I heard about it secondhand, and I did make a nomination. And that was a personal nomination from me to the committee. But I think that because it is so Park and Rec-driven, that that really is who everyone expects the Volunteer of the Year to be, is someone who is involved in Park and Rec. And I think it might be leaving out other members of the community because it's Park and Rec and the liaisons to Park and Rec, so it's all Park and Rec making the decisions. And so while I don't think that it necessarily should be the entire council making the decision, and I like the nomination process, I would like to see that the process gets a little bit of notification about nominees to the public in whatever method that looks like that the city deems appropriate. And I would like to see it somehow diversified away from being a straight shot of just Park and Rec people making that determination. And I'm sure that the people that are on that, making the, you know, the nomination, doing the selection process are looking at it more holistically, but they have a vetted interest in just Park and Rec.
Can I add, as having been on this, been on this subcommittee as liaison to Park and Rec, I will say that it has been, it has at times been a little frustrating because off there, it's been quite frequent that the liaisons from Park and Rec don't actually really know anyone on the list. And so it's hard for them to give input on, you know, like the council members generally know the people that are being nominated, but very, very often, the Park and Rec commissioners are trying to vote and they don't know the people on the list. And so they're kind of just voting or supporting based on what the council members are suggesting. And I think that it makes sense because this is technically an award that's coming from the council and an acknowledgement that's coming from the council, that ultimately it should be a council decision. And so I think that because doing it in a subcommittee affords a little bit more, it makes it easier to keep it under wraps because we want it to be a surprise. It also, I think, makes the process not as, I don't think the process is as good.
All right, no, that's good, good input. Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I submitted names for Volunteer of the Year for 20 years and gave up because every time I did, I was told they didn't qualify, and I couldn't understand why. And I was, to be honest with you, I was a little ashamed of the people who never have gotten recognized, who either died, left town, or just got old enough where they, they kind of disappeared without any recognition whatsoever. We have tons of people who they've worked through on committees and commissions, never been recognized once, other than thank you for your service. That's it. And some of them have worked on various committees and other city committees, never got recognized, maybe at a meeting for doing something, and, and these are unsung heroes who spend hours and hours unpaid of their lives. I understand completely that there are volunteers who work on city events that are more Parks and Rec-oriented, maybe they're not on a formal committee or commission, and they need recognition too. I'm all for that. But the fact that, and I asked around, if we go back years and years and we don't know when it changed, the Volunteer of the Year, I was told, used to be selected by the council. Somewhere in the process, it, it went to Parks and Rec. That preceded you, Noreen, so I'm not even going to ask you, but I think the council should be taking nominations, and I think the council is, is certainly qualified to be very open-minded to all the possibilities. I honestly, I'm just, I'm so disappointed at the people, I think, have been given a short shrift, and it doesn't look good for us, and we need, we need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
So, served on Park and Recs for four years and did work with Councilmember Davis on the selection of some of the Volunteers of the Year. And I will agree with what Councilmember Davis said, that not, that the Recreation Commissioners don't always know the volunteers that have been submitted. In my case, that was due to tenure, living in town, and I, Noreen will correct me if I'm wrong, but we probably have 20 or so applications that sit out there that have never won the award that we review every single year. So there are folks on there I certainly don't know. But I do sort of agree that since this is an award given by council, that council should be the one... that council should be the ones making the decision on, you know, who is the recipient of it. So, you know, I think that, you know, on the go-forward, you know, this is a potential that something we can look at, so.
Yeah, so, it sounds like there's been some discussion with Jeremy, right, about having a new process. So, it sounds like the council is in agreement that the decision to nominate and make the person the volunteer of the year should come from the council. And I am in agreement with all of you on that. So, we have a process that we use for selecting people to our committees and commissions. We could have a meeting such as that, or we could submit something. We could submit maybe three names to the city manager and do some kind of rank choice thing or, you know. Yeah, so, it's really up to us. So, kind of putting it out there, and some of you have been thinking about it. I can see folks ready to talk, so.
It's not about that. Mine is about a pain point, I think, in the process that we should iron out, which is how people get nominated. So, maybe where the process changed down the line, I'm not quite sure, is when I was on Park and Rec, the council asked the commission to come up with some guidelines. And so, that's what I had worked on. And maybe at that point, that's when Park and Rec got roped into the actual selection process. But the guidelines for the public, it says, "Three of the following: A consistent and ongoing service to the community spread over the course of many years slash decades. It's a lifetime achievement-type award. Extensive and significant volunteer service in a particular area or field. Volunteering across a variety of purposes and community groups. Selfless commitment, giving for the betterment of the community and not for personal recognition or gain. Inspires others to volunteer, takes the initiative to enhance the city." So, one thing that we found is that particularly with last year's nominations is that one person that was nominated didn't really fit three of the requirements. And so, I think that the community, maybe we need to do more to educate the community on what we're looking for. And if we don't, if maybe these requirements are no longer working, we might want to revisit this entirely. But I think part of, part of what we need to do every year is instead of saying, like, "Give us your recommendations for volunteer of the year," when we say that, we say, really, the volunteer of the year should be X, Y, and Z, so that people factor that in when submitting someone.
Well, it seems like this criteria is pretty strong.
It is, but I think we need to publicize it more.
I think that that's part of the process, right? That it doesn't go out there, and that that makes sense to do it. But really, in the end, it's going to come down to us. How do we want to select based upon people that meet the criteria?
I think, I think we might be getting a step ahead of ourselves. I wanted to ask, Jeremy, can you give a brief outline of what cities you've worked with in the past have done?
Sure, it's actually very, very simple process. There's, you have some criteria that are developed, that are determined to the city. So, if you've got those in place, typically, there's a call for nominations to the community, and they come directly to the council as a packet, and the council has a conversation. I've seen versions of it also where there's, and Tom, you can help me a little bit here. I might be stretching this a bit because it could be a little bit of a sensitive conversation where there's a little bit of, the information that is transmitted to the council can be then transmitted back to the city manager in a confidential form and then shown at a meeting as well. But it's usually very simple, very straightforward.
Yeah, exactly. So, oh, Tom, did you want to chime in?
No, no.
Okay, he's good, okay. All right, so, yeah, so, what kind of process would you like the council to have?
Could we, could we have the process in a workshop type? So, it's not here on the dais where we're discussing pros and cons?
For suggestion, maybe a stat, like, we put on another agenda, and there's a staff report of, like, it's suggested.
Sure, through the chair, maybe I'll make a blended recommendation, a hybrid, a workshop where we've got some recommendations or examples from other communities. I think that that would, would help the council very much.
I mean, I don't, I don't usually like looking at what, what did so-and-so do because that's not necessarily how I like to look at problems, is to see how other people did them or solved them. But, you know, I think a hybrid suggestion would be good.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Colleen?
I would just make one other suggestion. I think because Parks and Rec has some experience doing this, I would not just make it a matter of accepting recommendations from the residents. I would also say the city manager, departments, committees, commissions, anyone could make a recommendation. Why not?
Absolutely, including councilmembers.
Through the chair, one other thing, just not to make this any more complicated, but a couple other things that, to factor into your consideration as we bring the item back in a workshop. One would be, it may be the case that you're looking at something more than just volunteer of the year, that there might be different categories associated with that. The, you know, new, the new volunteer of the year, the retiring volunteer there. You can consider those, those types of things. That was, I'm sorry, it was just one point. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a good suggestion. As you had mentioned, Colleen, there's a lot of folks. There's a lot of folks, and we want to make sure we recognize them in a timely manner. I mean, it might be 10 years if we're only going one at a time, so.
Well, maybe, maybe, and I understand having a volunteer of the year and having that as one type of award, but I think we really should be doing lifetime service awards for people who have dedicated years and years of service, whether it be on a committee, a council. It could be for most anything in the city, an employee, and not just at the Christmas lunch where, you know, they get the 25-year handshake. But something where we really do acknowledge, you know, what people have done for the city over the years and the decades.
Didn't we used to do Star Awards?
We did.
And like, I use, I, if you, if you participated in a certain amount of, like, volunteer, like, canyon cleanups or whatever. So, when I was a kid, I would go and I would get my little star pin, my little B star pin, and I had gone to, you know, three canyon cleanups that year, and they call you up on stage, was that Lippman? And we would go across the stage, and it was like, it makes you want to, it makes you want to, you know, continue volunteering, makes you feel important and?
Off your chest up and feel good about yourself.
Five-year-old Madison loved that. So, that could be another opportunity.
Well, through the chair, not to put you on the spot, Mr. Mayor, but we've had a few conversations about the kind of recognition the council's talking about tonight. Maybe you wanted to share a few of those thoughts?
Yeah, no, sure, absolutely. I know that's something that, that you've been wanting to get going. And because we have had so many people who have given their time on committees and commissions, but you've expanded it, Tara, and it should be expanded because you, you just don't have to serve on a committee and commission to make a difference in the town. And so, having something that is non-staff, where we're bringing people together, recognizing them for however many years of service that they've put in, is something that we should do on an annual basis. And having the council lead that effort, to me, makes sense. And I think the community would really, really appreciate it.
Yes.
And especially those members who have served. So, sometime in the fall, I think we were thinking of doing something perhaps like that, bringing it to the council for, but now we're having the conversation now, so.
Yeah, through the chair, I think you, I think we both had thought that a conversation in the fall would make some sense. But since it's become part of this discussion, if it's the pleasure of the council, we can broaden out the workshop just a wee bit to include this bit of the conversation.
Yeah.
Does that work?
All right, fantastic, all right.
And I, I hope that we don't have to make it into a long workshop, just something that we could?
Oh, for this? No, we should?
Not on a Saturday now.
We should be able to crank it out pretty quick. So, okay, so, let's see, do we have any members of the public? No, we already did that. So, you got a direction? We're good?
Yeah, I think we're good. We'll, I will work with the mayor on scheduling the workshop. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, then moving on to staff reports. So, Jeremy, city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council have a very brief report. Just give me a moment while I pull it up. In the next few weeks, there's a few events and activities that the public should be aware of. This Saturday at 11:00 a.m. in this facility, the council will be holding a priority study session. That's from 11:00 to 2:00. Reminder that City Hall will be closed for Cesar Chavez Day on March 31st. And the Complete Streets Committee will be meeting on April 2nd. I don't normally mention committee and commission meetings, but given the interest in the community and working on traffic issues, I wanted to point out that that would be an important meeting for people to attend to learn more about the processes we're moving forward and meeting the commitment the council laid out for a 90-day work session and then bringing a project forward.
Say that again?
I'm sorry?
What's the date?
April 2nd.
April 2nd, from what time? 6:30?
Probably 5:15 for Complete Streets. Does that sound right? I'll report it out in a moment.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, mayor council matters, countywide assignments, and subcommittee reports. So.
Per general new practice here, if there's any questions or comments. There are a few areas where there are recommendations from the subcommittees. And if any members of any of the subcommittees that are discussed here want to bring that up, 6:30 Madison is the Complete Streets meeting, thank you. And I'll, I'll just take you through it. City facilities committee has two recommendations down under B. Any issues from the council?
So, so, they would like to agendize a discussion about future uses envisioned for the Marina Community Center Silver Spot and Mission Blue?
Correct.
I think that's fantastic. So, how would we do, would we just bring that back to the city council for regular meeting?
So, and feel free, Madison or Colleen, to comment on this. The, the plan, as I understand it, backing up the, the subcommittee did a tour of our city facilities over two days in the end of February and then met in early March. And the desire of the subcommittee is to think about all of our properties in a sort of a holistic 50,000-foot level. I suspect this will be discussed on Saturday as well. I understood that the subcommittee wanted to work up a report that they would bring forward with a variety of observations and recommendations. Believe they're still working on that, but TBD on when that's completed.
Okay, great, great.
Can I add to that? We did have a report. I worked up a whole list. I think you were, you were ill that day, so you may not have gotten a copy.
Are we speaking about the maintenance report or the?
The tour.
I have the maintenance report. We can speak offline.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do you want to say something about it?
Well, I, no, I was just going to say, and Madison, please jump in, is that in the tour, I think what struck us is that some buildings, in order to maintain structural integrity, they need immediate maintenance. There are two buildings identified, Community Center on Visitation and Mission Blue. Beyond that, when we got into talking about possible renovations, different buildings, what we discussed with staff and kind of where we went to then was, why would we put money into renovating when we don't know if the use of this building will remain the same? And we've not taken a look at what buildings are used for and thinking about the future. And so, we wanted to bring that discussion to the full council because there are possibilities and many things changing over the next 10 years that we don't just have to think of, this building is always used for this, that maybe we can think creatively, there will be other buildings, or we could change uses. And that was a discussion we wanted to have. Madison?
Yeah, I concur. I think that we, this came up during our tour, and I suspect this will come up in a future council meeting. But, you know, one of the, one of the things that we thought would be good was to have a representative from Silver Spot, maybe to, well, I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of Colleen, but I think maybe having a representative from Silver Spot to kind of come and talk to us about the program and because their lease is up and we need to renew that. And I think that the council would benefit from having a presentation from them and then a, you know, a follow-up discussion about that lease and if that lease still serves everyone and if there are modifications that need to be made and the appropriate way to perhaps do that. So, I think we could start with, with the executive director coming and having a conversation with council. And based on council asking questions, you know, we can make a determination about how we proceed with getting a new lease drawn up.
If, if I'm not mistaken, wouldn't that be something that, if it's discussing a lease in any form, whether it's the current lease or any future lease, that that would be something that would be better done in a closed session? And I'm asking this of the city attorney and the city manager.
Tom, as I understand it, the closed session is an opportunity for those discussions, but it is not a requirement to have those discussions in a closed session. You can have them in open session. The tool, though, is closed session if it's of a sensitive nature.
I mean, that's, that's absolutely right. I do want, for the public record, that the closed session is justified. I just want to distinguish what, what you're talking about, Jeremy, which is also important, is there are elements of a closed session that sometimes need to be brought up in public. And that's where that piece of the discussion would be had, whether it's a report out from the city attorney or it's a standalone discussion. So.
Well, certainly.
I don't want people to think we just take X behind closed doors. It doesn't work that way.
And certainly, any decisions made in closed session would be brought, and any lease or lease language would come before the entire city council in a public discussion.
Yes.
May I add one more thing? One of the other things that, that we talked about then in our, because we went on tour for two days, and then we had a meeting after that to talk about what we saw with staff and input as well. And one of the other things is we said that looking at best use of facilities should not be just in the present tense. It should be in the future tense. And that there really needed to be a timeline developed with a plan in order to plan in terms of revenues and expenses on making changes to buildings. And that was, so that we had a way to show that these things would be implemented over time. I think the misnomer is that if something needs to be changed or renovated, it's going to happen tomorrow. We can't always do that, but we need to have that plan and set out a timeline so we know what we're working towards achieving.
Yeah, no, it totally makes sense, right? You're going to, we're going to have an opportunity as a full council to evaluate all of the facilities that you toured and see what makes sense. As the city manager said, you know, some of these things will come up in the priority meeting on Saturday, I'm sure, and in the future.
We had residents that have been giving input to the council over various meetings about what they'd like to see here or there and taking that all into account, but also that there are other things that maybe they don't know about that, that we're thinking of as other possibilities. We want to be creative and approach this with a broader picture.
One thing is for sure, all the buildings need work.
Yes.
Everything, they all need something.
And we also talked about ways to generate revenues so that maintenance isn't always a catch-up, but that we might have a revenue stream that would help us keep the maintenance going instead of when it's really in doubt.
Like potentially an impact fee.
Well, there's other ways too.
Right, I'm just, as a, as a potential option. Frank?
Oh, no, you just hit on it, so, yeah, we're good.
Okay, great. So, all right, so, do you want to keep going, Jeremy?
Yeah, the next item D, Housing Subcommittee, there is a, a recommendation from, from the body on work that, that the staff has already identified we could start on in the fall, which is an Affordable Housing Action Plan in line with the strategic plan. Madison or Cliff, did you want to speak?
Yeah, you want to? Yeah, you want to talk a little bit about the importance of that, Madison, or?
Sorry, I was reading ahead. What did you say?
We're on the, the Housing Subcommittee.
I was reading liaison to, I was reading the liaison one.
Yeah, in the third paragraph with the Affordable, excuse me, the Affordable Housing Action Plan, if you had anything you wanted to add to that.
No, I mean, I think that, that's like a big item of discussion for me for Saturday, but I think that we, for me personally, would like us to look at, look at our fund and evaluate, okay, we have $4 million or so, we've had that money, we've only really put into that money since I've been on the council, we've taken out small bits here and there, but we have this money, and it'd be great for the council to sit down and come up with how, what is our intention with this money? We should start putting it to use, and we should have conversations about what that looks like. Is that a housing project? Is that a home rehabilitation program? Is that a first-time home buyer silent second program? Is that subsidizing rebuilding together? It could, is it rental assistance? What, what are, what is a program that we want to adopt or a few programs? And also figure out, like, what's the biggest bang for the buck and who do we want to serve? Low-income workforce housing, and so on, seniors, and, and then work backwards. So I would just, it'd be great to, you know, now in my third term and being on affordable housing for so many years, to be able to finally say that we did something with the affordable housing money that we are charged with being stewards of, so.
Yeah, no, well, well said, Madison. So we have a strategic housing plan, affordable housing plan, but we don't have an action plan for it, and I think that is what is needed. All those things that you mentioned, Madison, they could be action items, but we need to evaluate as a council what makes sense, what can we realistically do?
With the finite resources.
Absolutely. But we do know that there will be other opportunities to expand that affordable housing pot, and, you know, when you look at an action plan, there's the short-term, the midterm, and then the long-term, and, and we need to have that in place, so not just for this council, but for future councils, so that they can, you know, pick up the ball and run when they get elected. All right, next one.
In section two, the upcoming meetings, if the council has any direction to the subcommittees, this would be the appropriate time to provide that.
All right. Okay. That sounds good. So any comments for the Quarry Subcommittee? Feedback?
As it's being the first meeting, I think that, you know, it's hard to get a recommendation on what the subcommittee should do when we really don't know what the subcommittee's going to be doing.
Fair enough. And just putting it out there in case council members wanted to say, hey, can you look at this place? And that's, that's the intent, but you make a good point, Terry.
Through the chair, that's also true for the Emergency Preparedness Subcommittee. It is their first meeting, but if there's a particular area that any council member's interested in the committee having an, an initial conversation about, that would be appropriate.
Absolutely. Okay, so then age-friendly Subcommittee. Frank and I, we, we met and there was, geez, the room, the conference room was packed. So you want to say anything about that, Frank, about like the feedback that we got?
Sure, I think that's an understatement. I think we used every single chair in the annex for that meeting. It was extremely.
In this room?
No, the annex conference room, the long table.
Oh, the little room, okay.
Yeah, but no, we were pulling in chairs from every office to try and accommodate everybody, so the turnout there was very, very good. Of the nine domains, we got through three, we got through outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation and housing, and we got a variety of feedback on, on, on those topics along with three or four additional general comments. So in our next session, we'll be continuing to try and get through the remaining domains and, and talk about, and gather public feedback on them.
Absolutely.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah. You know, one of the things that, that was brought up, and Madison and I, it came up in our Affordable Housing, or Housing Subcommittee, was the, you know, what role can hip housing play? And since we have Napoló Gómez on the, on the board, and so that was one of those kind of like, hey, is, is it for, I don't know, housing or, you know, age-friendly? And we, we kicked, we punted to Jeremy.
Age-friendly, we said age-friendly, right?
Okay, yeah. So that, that could be, you know, an action item that comes out of this Subcommittee is to have that meeting with Napoló and, and maybe do a pilot program in, in Brisbane and, and, and find, you know, folks who, who would want to rent a room to a Brisbane resident? You know, let's see if we can keep it in-house? And so, yeah, so I, very excited about checking that out. All right, so moving on. Written communications.
Oh, wait, we have more Subcommittee reports.
Oh, I apologize. I should have known.
Oh, you should have known.
No, you did an awesome one, and I, I apologize for not giving you the floor to talk about that.
Well, we also had, Frank and I had a communications Subcommittee, because we didn't do reports last time.
Oh, okay.
And, and I'm just gonna do an intro and then I want you to jump in, is we were discussing many things, but one big topic was the functionality of the city website, our interest in adding more features to make it easier to navigate. We talked about the number of times the website's been down in the past month, and we brought up the communication system in this room, which has had its problems, it's an aging system with glitches. And Frank, you requested staff do an updated review of social media policy, and also, I believe you had a meeting with staff with the website provider, Civic Plus, so I'm gonna let you go from there, because I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you, that was a fantastic recap. Yeah, we did, we had a, a sort of a demo meeting with Civic Plus. The software is generally packaged by features, and so they were showing us what we could get if we upgraded our software package there. The meeting was really beneficial because they started showing us some features that we already had, and some reporting that maybe we didn't know that we had, and so I, I think it's good. As such, I know Carolina has made some changes to the website over the course of the past few days. If you do visit the website now, she's changed one of the tabs on the home screen to say, "I want to." And when you click on that, "I want to," there's a whole list of action items. I want to go swimming, I want to file for a permit, all those sort of things to make the website easier. So kudos to her for taking in that and making those changes. And I think one other thing we discussed was potentially putting together a, a content calendar that was going a little further out for items to communicate, so that was on the list too, when we talked, yeah.
I would just add that I think we're really fortunate that Frank is here on the council, on that Subcommittee, because in discussing websites, you have so much knowledge that the rest of us don't have about what can be done and, and what we should be looking for, and that was extremely valuable.
Yeah, thank you.
So, other committees. We went over facilities, okay, your favorite, Peninsula Clean Energy, I'm gonna condense this report.
Oh, I've been waiting all night for this.
I know you were. I will tell you that Mission Blue is on a list, one of 36 projects of the solar plus storage for public buildings, and we're gonna have battery installation coming up really soon, that'll be paired with the solar that was installed in 2022. The solar project on the library is also supposed to move ahead this year, and, and if you're wondering why everything's moving fast now, it's, it's because there's been a lot of reorganizing, and we're looking at all those batteries and solar panels come from China. And so everything is moving in fast forward because there's concern about both availability and cost. We learned San Mateo County is also now calling PCE, asking about solar on, and backup batteries on all the county building sites, which is a huge change for the county. And, oh, this is an interesting tidbit, we learned that one of President Trump's executive orders has put a complete stop to all California offshore wind projects that were being planned for this year. That's a big, big disappointment. There were lots of them, we're just going to get rolling feasibility studies this year, providing tons of energy, so, very sad. Last but not least, CCG, we have a TDM Subcommittee, I don't know who's on that.
Uh, I think we can't, I think we decided not to move forward with the TDM Subcommittee because we already have a plan.
Okay, okay, I thought you still had the Subcommittee. At any rate, with CCG, there was on the agenda an amendment that would allow for exemptions, and one of the problems with the exemptions is that the exemptions had to be, you met the criteria or exceeded it, which meant you might as well just go with what CCG wants. And in speaking with John Swicki and our city manager and, and Cliff, one of the problems is that every city is different, and so it, it was a very delicate thing, because CCG self-imposed this TDM plan, which for anyone at home doesn't know, it's traffic demand management, they want to eliminate cars on the road. And it was quite fascinating, because I broached the topic, thanking for the amendment, and said, but there are peculiarities, and if someone submits a plan that they have in their city and you turn it down, then what? It's one and done, and what does the city do? And so fortunately, the Chair, Adam Rack, he said, oh, there should be an appeals process. And that just opened Pandora's Box, and we had other cities, we had Portola Valley and Pacifica expressing very strong opinions about how the cookie cutter TDM CCG plan was not going to work in their cities. You're not going to reduce cars in Portola Valley where everyone has to drive. So the good part about this is we made an amendment to the amendment, so that staff at CCG has to work with cities to get their TDM plans either customized or altered in some way to try to get passed and approved. And if it reaches an impasse, it goes to the full board for an appeal. So for a city like ours and some of the other cities with unusual site characteristics, this was a, a really big win for us, so, thank you.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Good job.
Thank you, staff, for all of your, your input and coaching on that. That's all I have.
Fantastic. All righty, Frank, do you have any others?
No further updates.
Airport Roundtable?
No, that's coming up. I've had a couple of executive meetings, but nothing to report on, and my land use meeting got canceled because it didn't have anything on it.
Got it, got it, all right. Madison, anything else? No?
No.
All right, so written communications, Ingrid?
Communications were received from Spitz regarding PG&E power asset acquisition project, Seco update, Larson regarding requesting your attendance at Spring Thing, we have Eves regarding the Quarry, and also Robert Hall regarding the Quarry.
Thank you. Yeah, Spring Thing was pretty cool, so. And Frank won a, an auction item to name, he thinks he's gonna be able to create, but I think it's only naming rights for a sandwich at Julie's.
Confirmed today, it's create.
Oh, jeez.
Create, oh, create is, yeah.
Through the chair, where are you able to do this, Frank? This is fantastic.
Julie's Deli, oh.
We'll be interested to see what the Frank is.
Yeah.
Is that what you're gonna call it, or the Stella?
That's a giveaway, the Frank.
It's, I, I cannot comment at this time.
It's in development.
This is top secret stuff, bud.
There you go. All righty, oral communications, anyone out in the internet land like to make a comment?
Nope.
Okay, so our next meeting is gonna be at 6:30?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
Thanks for the panic attack today.
Gotta keep you on your toes.
All righty, well, thank you, everybody, and meeting is adjourned.